Evening all, I follow our September ninth twenty twenty five within your town council meeting. Just so everyone know quickly, Tom Anderson. Take care of the family and you can do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is true that the republic which stands on the nation and the year out. And the official liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to, for the record, I was winking back in. It was a big difference.
I just said take care of important. We had no one sign up this evening, so it must be doing something right. At this point, two things that I apologize council. Please put him on the spot, he's a budget meeting. Well, I was running around here. Yeah, we have to play Mary and I sound like this part. I heard you were done four minutes ago. At this point, I'd like to introduce Senator Pete Turner. For a few minutes. Like that, he works and he has a few questions.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for having me down. You guys did a great job this year working, working the capital and looking for your projects and your needs to be covered and you know, you had great representation in Tallahassee and I mean, you guys as a community sent a lot of money to us. And this is just a chance for us to bring that back home from you guys and you know, get some things done that are outside of your norm every day. And happy to do so. I mean, we've been, been very fortunate over the five years that I've been in legislature to be able to do that for not just you, but a lot of other folks. And it's, it's meant a lot, you know, so. It's what we, what we should be doing when we have extra funds to do so, so. Look forward to working with you on projects moving forward, so get ready. I mean, the House is open for business on appropriations, but the, but the Senate is not. As of yet, but I'm sure it'll be open pretty soon. So with that, you guys have any questions?
I'd just like to take you out to you, I send our appreciation as a town and the community for not only for those appropriations, but the representation. It's important for us to, you know, leverage each other's abilities and strengths to be able to make some of these projects go forward then we just wouldn't be able to. Appreciate it. Guys, any additional questions?
Senator, thanks for coming. One of the questions I had is there was a lot of discussion about moving property taxes. Do using property taxes in state level. Obviously, a community like Windermere is very competitive on property taxes. Because we have a lot of residents here, not a lot of commercial activity, which your sense of.
Well, I, I do think there's some merit to the issue, right? The conversation needs to be had to figure out what we can, can't do when it comes to property taxes. You know, a lot of times, not you guys in general, but a lot of times municipalities get carried away. And we, you know, abuse what they do have and you see that the, the money shuffle from one department to another department and finally it's all gone and then they've got special projects that they're working on that don't mean anything. So, you know, looking at what it costs the average homeowner property taxes, you know, how can we change that? What do we have to do to make it better? You know, it would have to be replaced. I mean, if you look at what the consensus say, it would with sales tax and reimbursement from, from the state to you for the coverage of those homes that are property. And I think that's what we're really looking at is home set of properties for those people, the true Floridians that live here and you know, face the rising costs of everything else. So, yeah, I think the conversation is going to get in depth and, and we'll, we'll search it out and figure out what we can and can't do. But you guys will, you'll, you'll be aware of how that will.
I see a ground like golfers will do the assistance surfing. Bounce ideas off of anyone.
You know, this, this last session was, my motto was expect the unexpected. You really didn't know what was gonna happen. But in the end, we, we, we came out with a lot of wins. A lot of things we worked on and we'll work on again. But all in all, you know, just work on things that matter to all of us and all our taxpayers and folks out here and your, your community and others. I mean, that's what it's all about, really. I want to thank, you know, my, my staff's great too. I always say I surround myself with people know more than I do. Eric Pramundo and Ali and Debbie Dennis, they're, they're awesome. If anybody needs any help, you call my office. They, they're ready and willing to help and they have the experience behind them to seek out and find the answers to your questions or concerns or how to do something. You know, tips on getting things done. Debbie works on appropriations. She's, she's super awesome. She's been in the process for almost thirty years, so. Happy to have her because she's just a treasure trove. She knows how to work it and get to the finish line, so. We're, we're, we're a group team that works well together, so. Happy to be of service.
I think one of the other things that is always near to small communities, our ability to be maybe a little different than the folks back there. You know, I think that's probably great to hear this about central Florida, certainly western community instead. My part of coffee of each other saying, we're not in our garden, we're not in a go, we work. We appreciate that leverage and that flexibility to be able to, they do a few things that are a little differently. Whereas, you know, if we're looking at legislation that kind of takes that away often with the best intentions. But I think those things certainly, you know, we feel we come back to those because we do like have some extra trees and to have our roads a little differently. I know it's not for everybody, but certainly we have a lot of folks here that appreciate that distinction and that difference. So I'd like to be able to always ask for that and continue to, to govern at the local level on the states that impact our local papers. Anything additional for the center? Appreciate you having to see us and welcome you to Windermere. Come anytime.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great council, next up we have Debbie, thank you for being here. We're going to work our way through this the best way we can and it won't be exciting, but it is a lot of, a lot of counties are triggered by some of the, the laws and statutes that have been updated in Tallahassee and so we will respond to those that can be as appropriate. And that is constantly, so if you're wondering why these are on here, that is the reason we have to make sure we stay in form with is all state laws. So we'll start off with resolution twenty twenty five oh six. This next item is on the agenda. It's a resolution twenty five oh six of the town council of town Windermere. And this is pertaining to the non-ambular assessment role for streetlights for the Willows of May three, phase one, two, and three. As background, each resident in the Willows was paying a hundred and fourteen dollars and twelve cents a year to cover the cost of the streetlights. Duke Energy has increased those costs and on the next schedule, each resident will be required to pay or reach a house or rather pay one twenty seven forty seven for the cost of those three lights, the increase of thirteen thirty five. This time we will close our Windermere town council meeting at six ten P M and we will open a public hearing at six ten P M. And we will discuss any input or comment on the non-ambular assessment for the increases in cost of streetlights per phases one, two, and three. Are there any comments pertaining? Yes, sir. Please go to the podium. Give us your name and your address and.
Good evening. Thank you. Robert Duggan, one one four four eight Willow Gardens Drive in the Willows. Thirty-two-year resident in the Willows. Wanted to bring the council attention. A year ago, we had a incident where the lamp in front of our house went down. We've had over a year worth of communications trying to get Duke to help us with that and it'd be different if we were asked to pay for some kind of service, but we're now being asked to pay for zero service from Duke. And when we reached out to the town, we were told to check with Duke. We reached out to Duke. They said we have to go through the town now. And so we've just recently gotten some communication from one of the council members about this, but it's been a year and we've gotten no resolution with that. The basic story is the lamp went down. They came out to replace it. You replace it with a light that you could land a plane with. And you know, I, I've looked through the requirements. It only needs a hundred watt ball basically for a pedestrian walkway. Four hundred if it's a parking area and this is a pedestrian walkway very close to our house and so it becomes, you know, a beacon of light. And that light actually timed differently as well. It goes on first in the morning off last in the, at night. Some of the lamps are frosted. Some of them are clear. Some of them are yellow. Some of them are white. So we have no consistency and we have nowhere to go. We have no one to ask and I, I, I it, it wouldn't make a difference if it was five dollars or a hundred dollars, but when we get zero service, that becomes an issue that the council has to understand.
I didn't see the email, Tommy J. Updates on that.
I do, yes. I think it was back in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four that Duke Energy did go out and put a, a shade in that structure. So your, your story is a little bit different from the email we received. The email we received was that, you know, from your light. Was that the light was shining in your bedroom?
Yes, exactly.
So we contacted Duke Energy. They came out to check whether it was a twenty-foot light or a fifteen-foot light. It is a fifteen-foot light. When I went on Google Earth today to take a look, I'm seeing that that is exactly the same decorative streetlights on all of the streets throughout the Willows. So I did not see a difference in that light from everything else in the community. So they did send somebody out, I think it was yesterday, to take a look at that. They will have their engineering group come out to see if that light could possibly be removed if it's causing you an issue. However, what would probably have to happen in that situation is we would get the information from them on what has to happen. We would take that back to your HOA and let you know that the only resolution Duke could come up with is moving that light if you're, if you don't want it there. And that would be your HOA's decision once we have that information. We would not, you know, literally just decide to move that, remove that light without your HOA's acknowledgement and understanding and that's what's going to happen. Okay?
Actually, it's not the appearance of the light, it's the amount of illumination. And so there's no way to look at that light and understand illumination. You're now in the dark. And when they came out to look at it, my wife was actually there. She's an electrical engineer. And so I think she understands a little bit about what they did. They did nothing. They opened it up, looked at it and closed it. So they didn't put a shield or anything in there. So they may have done something yesterday. I don't know. But it took a year to, to the moment we stand here, there is no resolution. And so I, I don't think it needs to be moved. It's been there for thirty years. I think if they appropriately place illumination level to something reasonable, it would be, wow, only needs to be a hundred watt ball according to Orange County regulation.
So the, remind me of your.
One one four four eight Willow Gardens Drive. And Google Earth was only in the daytime, so I'm not sure how you get any information on a streetlight in the beginning of the, you know, the day.
Well, I was planning to go by this evening after John Council could take a look.
I'm thinking you guys keep talking to us, you know.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate everybody. I'm great. Thank you for your communication. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming to talk.
Hey, I just want to say I have a record that we received in the email from Jazz.
Yes.
So it's on, on the record. Everybody got a copy of it?
Any additional public comment on this item? Speakers, we're trying to move down, close our public hearing at six sixteen P M, reopen our town council meeting at six sixteen. We're pushing to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six. If you're a very fast person. Exciting, fast person. Questions, councilor, concerns, council. Seeing none, you're moving councilperson's agree.
I.
I.
I didn't pass it to you in this league. I guess it's sort of a, take a look at it, we'll get there. I know Duke sometimes, at the time, boy, we either have some lights out and it's, it's always a little bit of a frustrating experience.
Yeah, we all do.
Next up is ordinance number, so just so we're not so aware, so we're going to have a few first readings here. We will not have public hearings for the exception of on this next one. This is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero six, the town winner comprehensive plan amendment. So first reading, well, it's a public hearing. This is for ordinance by the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to comprehensive plan amendment, we adopted. Town winner comprehensive plan pursuant to chapter one sixty-three Florida statutes based on the evaluation, greatest comprehensive plan pursuant to chapter one sixty-three, one ninety-one Florida statutes providing for even for these, providing applicability, separability and effective date. Tommy, I believe you're going to sit on this and then we'll have other folks. If they have questions.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to remind town, town council that you have over the last several months been reviewing the comprehensive plan that was developed by Brad's team and approved that being transmitted to Tallahassee and the state. Once it got to Tallahassee, they review it as they do with all municipal top plans. Then they come back either with comments or no comments and they did not come back with comments. Congratulations, Brad. So once, once they do that, they send a letter to the town letting us know that it is now time for the first public hearing for the comprehensive development plan. So that's what you're here doing this evening. Mr. Brad Cornelius is here. Should you have any questions?
Mayor, now just so you all, as, as Tommy said, what you had for you is exactly the same document that you approved for transmission, transmital in May. There's been no changes or updates to that document. So it has, as Tommy said, any question to me, it looks in there, I'll be happy to answer it.
Council, Brad, it's more of a piece. He's trying to get all the way. All right, excellent. Very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Ben Drags.
It's not Brad, Tony.
Seeing no questions from council at this time, we close our town council meeting at six eighteen P M, reopen the public hearing. And any, any wishes to be, any public comment on ordinance under twenty-five dash zero six, the town of Windermere comprehensive and then people can please join us at the. Seeing none, close our public hearing at six twenty P M, reopen our Windermere town council meeting at six. Again, council, this is a first reading, so we will have a second reading and another public hearing on some red council where making sure we stay on track. Next up, council is new business. We have three sets of meeting minutes. I think one is town council budget seven, eight minutes for August seventh, twenty twenty-five. Town council meeting minutes before August twelfth, twenty five, as well as the virtual public workshop on the Butler's Basin minutes. Those were this eighteen. I knew there was one change to that or the which I wasn't.
August eighteenth, just checked sprinter's error instead of staging, stage.
So stacking stage.
Stack, yeah, stacking stage.
Stacking and staging.
Extra cheap for a word.
Fair enough, council. You can approve these items individually or as.
Question, approve all three sets.
Question, approve all three by. Second, councilperson David. Questions, councilor, concerns, council. Seeing none, again, voting councilperson. And it's approval for all three of the meetings. Next up, it's your ordinance isn't real, we'll do it. It's been tired tonight. These are first readings, so we will not have a public hearing until our next meeting on these items. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero five, first reading and ordinance of the town, Windermere Florida, pertaining to develop providing findings, then we subparagraph three point zero two point zero two, four, eight, three, and sections one, two, point zero two, eight, one, two, and one, two, zero, three. And we have developed a code clarifying and revising procedures and requirements, reviewing the approval of post class and re-class plan to conform to the twenty twenty-five amendments. To part one, you can check the twenty seventy-seven of Florida statutes providing application, separability and effective date. Item number two is ordinance number. That's good. Curious what it might say. And ordinance, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, we're permitting inspections, first reading. And ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to reasonable accommodations for certified recovery purposes, providing findings, creating new article. That's going to be ten, or two sixteen, right? We'll prove, yeah, got a real new one trying to learn. A land development code, providing definitions, providing standards for the establishment of recovery residences and an application procedure, bearing the suspension of failure to obtain clarification, proper basis for rehabilitation, reasonable accommodation.
Certification on clarification.
Certification on clarification. Certification, proper basis for rehabilitation, reasonable accommodation, declaring that recovery residences are subject to the same regulations and have the same rights as residential units, providing for publication, separability and effective date. Next up is item three. Linking five dash zero nine. Also, see this one has certified recovery residence.
One is on page one forty-five. It's supposed to be the sprinklers and.
Yeah, it's statute.
Mayor, I can bring them up to you if that's easier.
We do have, keep me honest here.
The, the numbers aren't coinciding with the actual ordinances in the agenda. We'll fix it.
I'm actually giving the numbers.
So the recovery residence is twenty twenty-five oh nine. And then when they exceed condominium and cooperative building. And by the way, those are all ordinances that are required by the legislature. Maybe Mr. True, Senator True now is finding some of these things. I, yes, exactly.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the numbers combined. So you'll see. Right, all right, because I have. Right, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten. This is an ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to structural inspections and repairs of condominiums and cooperative buildings, providing findings, creating article three, chapter six of the good work is requiring milestone inspections and condominiums and cooperative buildings. Requirement special for worse, that's the like time range for repairs, so we're staying in the midst. Requirement needing sufficient to implement apparent inspection information to the department of these special regulation by the weekend. And that's deep and that is twenty five dash ten. And this is the broader feeling better ordinance of twenty twenty-five dash eight. Ordinance of the town of Windermere pertaining to fire safety, I mean, findings, creating new article four, chapter six, code of ordinances and acting simplified permitting inspection process for viral alarm systems, fire sprinkler system projects, requiring a certain document tension by contractors, providing for applications and refunds in certain circumstances and providing qualification set of the building. And the date. As twenty five dash. Or we got a re, 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 oh, right. We call it, oh, eight.
Yes.
We're going to do nine. Second, I'll have that here. So this is working since twenty five dash zero. Checking councilor, I'm sure you're correct. Ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to reasonable accommodations, certified recovery residences. Providing findings, creating new articles, assisting, and then developing code, buying definitions and standard time to establish residences and an application procedure, bearing suspension of failure to obtain certification, a proper basis, renovation of reasonable accommodation. Bearing that recovery residences are subject to the same regulation and have the same rights as residential units, providing for publication, separability, effective date. Again, that's so this is twenty five dash. Take two seconds and make sure you have them all. Are you good? Thank you, you guys. I appreciate you working through this with that. Next up is one. Right, so now contracts and agreements is a little more fun. This is ready to date, no order, but they have twenty twenty-five dash two, save route to school phase one. Let's get it presented on the site.
Me.
This is exciting. This is what I got on council.
It's coming to fruition. So the town is involved in what we call a lap certification project with the Ped Bridge and the World Trade. So that requires quite about, quite a bit of oversight from the Florida Department of Transportation's construction group. So in order to get to this point tonight, I think I submitted twenty-some documentations, including a narrative covering twenty different points to prove that the contractor being awarded this evening had done everything that was necessary in the Department of Transportation Systems and their E O C systems. So they have done that. F D O T has conferred that Bus Celia is the most responsible, responsive bidder for this project. So what we're asking you to do this evening is approve them as the contractor. Once we do that, then I have to go back into the state system and note that you guys approved it this evening, so the contractors can then submit all of their E O C documentation. Once they do that, we can actually set a meeting with the contractor, the D O T construction folks, our team and the new C E I inspection firm that has been provided to us by the D O T. So once we meet with everyone, then we'll have an actual schedule for when we're going to kick this project off. When we'll be turning around and what the actual timeline is from start to finish. So this step is absolutely one hundred percent necessary this evening because we are on a timeline for that funding.
So in terms of budget, there was a two separate budget years based on the three hundred and sixty-day schedule.
Yes, yes.
Council, any additional questions for the staff?
I'll just remember to tell you, so I see that V D I and marine contractors, senior construction and.
Yeah. Yes, sir. So when you, when you submit a bid under the lap certification process, you have to make sure you have submitted everything. Some of them missed things like certain documentation that was required as part of the submittal. Some of them did things like didn't provide it in the DVD format or the USB. Some of them did things like didn't provide it in the D V D format or the U S B sorry format they were supposed to. Anyone that did not comply with that was deemed unresponsive.
Three of those were.
Yes, sir.
Still missing or.
Yes, sir.
Seeing that we will enter a motion of order for video twenty twenty five. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much, council. It's. It's a big step in the right direction. We're all secretly excited in more talking about pedestrian bridge than anything about second avenue. No other considerations. Thanks for my knowledge. Just briefly, I was. Take a moment to remind everyone that Monday, eleven, this Thursday. At six o'clock. See everybody. Is able to make it, the mother cooperates. It's always a really nice ceremony. That's about thirty thirty five minutes. We've got really fantastic special guests. Chief of. Your first day.
First correct. Just wanted to. The. Everybody come out. Everybody sign yet to be the, the flags. I'm still working on my, I've been busy interviewing, but unfortunately, I'm in our pocket.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, we had a sort of preparation for a meeting yesterday. Joe, we have stepped up to be the interim chair while we look for a chairperson for that board and addition to that area. We are working through the audio history to continue that. That was something this centennial committee had picked up and we are gonna pick it up. They're looking for fundraising ideas, but. Big thing is that you know anybody that wants to serve on this for preservation more than four members. So.
Yeah, technically it should be stopped.
I know she knew that takes care of her. Interested in assisting the. So yeah, anything you can do to connect and assist each other. Yes, she's, she's great.
Long way to planning. Which we start by.
Yeah, did you change which is, yeah, change.
Yeah, because my. You're five even there. Three, so. This should reduce the five actually without consideration if things necessary. And then we have one of our. Four members also resigned for health reasons. And then. But we currently do not have a. Need person that. Well, I think we did five hours of the block. It's been a lot of times. My group is a little older like I am and we try to. And there's a lot of times we couldn't get five people there. So whatever.
That's a lot of new. Really great opportunity. Those particular committees are really good ones to get started on to see if you. You know, if you close your vote, right?
For a long time. Oh, yeah, it was closer down the corner news. December fifth. It does have a roaring twenty thing, so there's, there's discussion on, I mean, actually. House of the contest at this point. The maybe it's gonna be in the liberal innovations. Probably in students of that. End of October. We have door to door. We've done the other foot forward. It's kind of been a hit or miss. So they're, they're all here enough to do a straight forward. We're gonna give it. Centennial has stepped up also, so. Little bit of Christmas on end this year is out as part of a centennial celebration. We have. October seventh is the Winter Social sixty plus luncheon. AKA the elders luncheon. It is coming out this next month, ten or eleven thirty is the seven. And then just got word the vote break will be on the twenty of this under this year, so the Saturday. So we do the coldest day of the year. Uh, yes. And I think this is coming to talk about the. Decision that's more people signed up.
Any staff reports?
My only report this evening is we've talked about one of the projects coming down the pipe, which is the Pet Bridge and the War Trail, but we also have West Second Avenue still happening. We did just finish up with ninth and tenth old dirt main down this way. And we have Butler project starting and then after that Bessie. So we will have a lot of construction going on in town and I ask everyone to. To bear with us with some patience. The end result will be much better than what we have now. And we will do our best to communicate as effectively as John and Frank have on West Second Avenue. Letting everyone know what's going on with those projects. I would like to take, to take this moment to thank John and Frank. They have done a really great job project managing West Second Avenue and they're gonna have their hands full as these other ones. Get underway as well, but they've done a fantastic job and I just want to show my appreciation.
We all want to show appreciation to the entire team and within this. We have more projects going on in town than we ever had. Certainly one time, not only probably, but. Last year and I mean, so. Think one of the things that council can do. Offer where we can. You know, here at the event, remind people that. Destruction is never beautiful, but the end result. That's where their energies and. To be supportive of their concerns as well as supporting the team that's chats with doing these projects forward. Other things saying they get more difficult and we take behind stairs and stretches it out. Best time to reach out. Make sure and get air efficiency and trying to adjust as we go to meet all the criteria, but to make sure that. So if we can, if we can show her some of that. To share appreciation and we'll get there.
Thank you. Heather, do you have any comments this evening?
We have. Motion, the motions for summary judgment hearings next week for the. For the vote. So we'll report back when we.
It pushed us to. Six weeks.
Yes.
But I, 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 one thing that I say. I judge how well Frank and I are doing, Tonya and our team based on. How many comments you guys are receiving from West Second Avenue residents. And we get blown that road up. But yeah, we've also walked alongside them in the last two years. So I look at how successful we have been as a team and how many. Comments and criticisms we get. They are welcoming. They have actually thrown luncheons for the guys in the. That really. Tales to having a really, really good contractor. Which makes our lives easier than one that is. Microsoft user friendly. So that's. No comment, I commit.
Appreciate it. Thanks, sir. And listen, it's definitely been through the scene. You know, it's tough, but being responsive and listening and you guys being available. Chief, before you start.
We have the Olympia High School. This coming.
Yeah, we got a bunch. First, I'm not sure if I recognize Johnson's students without a ball cap. It's true. It's true. I got my hair cut right before I came in. Uh, yeah, we, we had a, you know, busy month picking back into the fall, but school started back. Unfortunately, we had a stolen car, which fortunately we captured that, unfortunately, crashed a couple of people as well. Uh, you know, unfortunate incident over on. Lake Street Park that young individual did pass away. So that's unfortunate there. So would you continue to remind our folks? You know, as long as I've been here, I don't know that we've had a single car stolen that hasn't been. So you don't want cars stolen, so we please don't miss them. How I do so. Yeah, lots of stuff coming up. We get ready for lots of different events. Mayor's been joining me. September, Wednesday morning for the Patriot Day breakfast. Officer Basin is receiving a patriot word for his. Life-saving measures and that's not just one, not two, but three. Actually, life-saving measures were in courts of six months and actually if he went outside one more month, he wouldn't have four. That was outside the Brandon. So thank you for joining us on that night. Thompson Barbers is next week. We got the Olympia Parade. Next week as well. After that, we got a sleep night on weekly spoke that bill coming up. And. A bunch, a bunch of different things. So we're, we're busy. We're in this evening there. Carlos, starting from our handouts is when the leadership class right now, so we're making sure we're. That's a good succession plan and going on there. We've done a great job and looking forward. For that. We also are fully staffed. I think you guys know our last officer. There and our final also standing aside. Now we're gonna be looking for an additional reserve officer. We're really trying to focus on going in full time and bringing in another reserve officer board. National layout is coming up as well. So a bunch of projects that are coming up recently.
National layout, September twenty sixth.
September twenty sixth. I'm saying that as a. October. Yeah, and just so we see that go out. Winter, we're gonna be taking care of one of the police park foundation and C P I are here are, you know, sponsoring that event. The town of Winter, our residents, we're looking to get at least a hundred, one fifty volunteers for the morning. The eight to about eleven thirty. It's gonna go on to like one thirty in the afternoon because it's a hundred buck that bill. But in the afternoon, there's several local churches that have fanned together to get over two hundred volunteers. So we're gonna let them take the hot part of the day. Cool part of the morning to come out and build some beds and we're gonna have some other folks.
It's always good. It's always a good time.
It's a great event. If anybody wants to, we have some of our officers, we have some town residents who've got involved in that organization. Um, it's, it's really cool to build the beds out here. That's awesome, but the. They actually deliver the beds and we're blessed in our community, probably not bed owner in our community, but they're helping a little part. We started waste in our garden, which you guys know who I'm involved with and I know some of that. We get an opportunity to deliver those beds in the weekends. And really just like an impact in this time. So it's pretty special.
So we also connected. With the disaster case management program run through the state and a few months that team operates. We connected several. Homeowners who had their homes destroyed or flooded. Would sleep in the piece and then bring all to you, give the kids outfits and so we were able to do the house repair and then. Putting those guys, we got them connected up. It's been another success and opportunity to. To make sure that people feel safe and secure based to some.
I'll ask a video time of. A preview of February fourteenth of two thousand and twenty six. I'm working on a fundraiser event that's gonna be at the pines called Loops and Salutes. It'll be fundraising for the organizations that I was, that I helped with to go to the ranch in Colorado. A lot of you have heard about that before. I just went out there last week and we got a chance of my wife and I to facilitate. What's called Hill Mortgage Program to couples that are out there, military vets, first responders, lots of from U P S D and other things. We just get blessed for an opportunity to speak with them. Really cool thing this year is we actually brought two of our officers and their wives out there this year. So. We got a scholarship of them for the monies that we've raised. So it's really cool that we'll get to take them our officers, you know, in that kind of capacity as well. They really enjoyed it.
Anything exciting from the first office?
I saw records request.
Any, anything additional for the good of the work? Right. Seeing that we will.
Be for rescuing us.